Good evening and welcome to this evening's meeting of the Fairmont School Board. It is Tuesday, April 11, 2017. Please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And we have a quorum. Okay, and we have a quorum. Everybody's present? And minutes from last meeting?
I move to approve the March 28, 2017, school board meeting minutes as presented.
Second.
Go ahead.
We'll take Del. We have a motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
And the motion passes. And we have an agenda. Any corrections?
This is a new white agenda. No green. Perfect. I will approve the agenda as presented.
And do we have a second?
Second.
Yeah, motion in a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
And the motion passes. Okay. And we do have a celebration, but we will hold that off for a little bit pending the arrival of our celebrant.
Okay.
So, how about Joe, superintendent's report?
Sure, thank you. I think we've distributed an enrollment report. And just to point out that there's a five student change from last week, or last meeting, from 1,006-70 to 1,006-65. And then if we look at our school board calendar, we have a number of important things coming up in the next few days. First of all, tomorrow, April 12, from 8 till noon, is the ACE Career Exploration. That will be held in the gymnasium at Fairmont High School. And that is just a great event. I know there's over 600 10th graders from north central Iowa and south central Minnesota that will be attending that meeting. I think there's over 60 vendors that will be there that will be showing different job opportunities that are available in the south central part of the state. And it's just, it's a fun time for the 10th graders to come. It's to, the real purpose of ACE is to encourage 10th graders to really start thinking about life after high school. And if you're going to go on to a two-year school, or a four-year school, or directly into the workforce. And they do have pretty good munchies there, too. So if anybody from the board wants to stop by and just take a look and see, because it's really fascinating. Also, in addition to that, there's also a game show that goes on throughout the day, and that's held in the Performing Arts Center. So half the students are in the gymnasium while half the students are in the Performing Arts Center. It's kind of fun to watch both. So that's tomorrow. And then Thursday, April 20, is, there's really two things going on on Thursday, April 20. First of all, we have the Policy Committee meeting that will be held at 4:30. And then if you recall, in the evening is the first time that we meet again with the Strategic Planning. And that's when I'll be delivering the State of the Education address, and we'll start our strategic planning process. We are in the process also of sending out letters to the 20-plus individuals that have agreed to serve on the Strategic Planning Committee. And then on Friday, April 21, is the Retirement Tea. We have a number of faculty and support staff that are retiring this year. And the Retirement Tea will be held at the, in Fairmont Area School, at the William Budroom. It's going to be on a Friday this year. Usually we have that on a Thursday, but at the request of our most senior teacher, otherwise known as Top Dog Shloman. Mrs. Shloman would like to have it on Friday, so we're going to honor that request. And then Saturday, April 29, is Prom Night in Fairmont. And that's always a fun time for the faculty, and for the students, and for parents. So, busy month in April.
Okay. Very good. So now we will have our celebration. Chris? Chris Engelby will present Service Day and Blood Drive.
Good evening. I appreciate you guys allowing me to speak on a few things. First of all, Blood Drive, we had a Fall Drive and we had a Spring Drive. And we had 135 units that we collected out of both of those. We were a little bit lower in our numbers in the spring, and we don't know why. I know there was a speech meet, so we might try to move it to more of a Wednesday, because it was on a Thursday this time. But, you know, still, no matter what numbers we, you know, collect, the Red Cross is always just so thankful. Because I know they had a couple schools that had to cancel because of basketball tournaments. And that's one of the things with the Red Cross, is they really look forward to having school blood drives, just because they collect so much blood. And the high school kids are usually, you know, really good about that. One of the things that they do at the end of the year is how much blood that you collect, then they offer scholarships. And so, my two student workers are Ben Hurnus and Claudia Bliese. And this is their first full year, they're juniors, and so I'll have them back next year. And they have been just excellent workers and doing everything that we need. They're great to work with. And when they're seniors, then they will get the scholarship money. This year, though, what I did was, first of all, I want to acknowledge the biggest givers for donating blood over their high school careers. David Trevino has donated nine times, which is unbelievable. Javier Martinez, seven times. Danny Morris, seven times. And Carlos Savante, seven times. So, I just think that's wonderful, that all four of those have given that many times. Another thing that will happen at graduation, if you notice, that anybody that has donated twice at the school blood drive and once at the community blood drive, then they can apply for a red cord. And so, they'll be wearing like a red cord over their gown, and that really says a lot for those kids that, you know, and they really want that cord. And so, I kind of told the kids, now make sure that you apply, because you have to do it online now. You don't do it through school. And so, anyway, we will have scholarship money for $750, and we'll divide that by two. And so, what I'm going to do is I'm going to give that to David Trevino and Danny Morris. And so I'm going to notify them, and they're going to fill out the paperwork, and then they will get that scholarship money for the fall when they go to college. So I want to congratulate them. Also, I just kind of want to put a little plug for our We Day. I'm also the coordinator for the We Day. We took probably about 23 kids up to St. Paul in the fall for our big We Day conference. And it's like a huge concert. It's just amazing, all the different speakers that they have. And then one of the things that we just got done doing is working at the Family Fun Fair food stand. We were in charge of that. And all the proceeds, we had many donors, and all the proceeds, we ended up making over $500, which is going to go toward our World Fundraiser with our We Day program. And our World Fundraiser is Education with Kids in Ecuador. So I will send that check to the We Day coordinators up in Toronto, Canada. And then they will forward that money to Ecuador and is able to use that money toward education, which I think is awesome. My final thing is to talk about our big Service Project Day, which is May 12. The rain date is May 19. And so, I just want to advertise, I know I've had it in the paper, the photo press, and so I just kind of want to advertise that anybody that's in need of help, whether it's yard work, maybe wash windows, trim bushes, clean out the eaves, sweep the garage. I know that next week I'll be calling more businesses that I usually contact, the Humane Society. And I usually try to contact maybe some nursing homes and some other regular people that have had us come almost every year since we've done this. I think this is going to be our ninth year of doing this. And so, if anybody is interested, they can call me in my classroom. My number is (235) 4164, and they can just leave a message, and then I will call them back and help them fill out their applications. So, we've always had just positive feedback with that Service Project Day. And so, we look forward to having another successful Project Day in May.
Are we still planning on taking some students down to Seeline?
Yes. We usually do. I already have it reserved, and we have it on your calendar already, Mr. Brown.
Okay.
Because you're usually one of my drivers. So.
Well, well done on all levels there.
Thank you.
Also, Chris, just wanted to say thank you for the very good job that you and Tony did on the TV story that KEYC did about Tony helping the young student that was choking at breakfast there. So, thanks for doing that and doing a nice job on that story, too.
Well, I know that Jason came and interviewed us last Thursday, and then we had it in the paper. And then yesterday morning, Lori Higgins called me and just said, hey, KEYC just called, they want to interview. And so that was really exciting, and to have all three of us together. We never, Tony and I never really knew who the seventh grader was, so it was kind of neat to have all of us come together. And she was able to thank Tony, and I think it really hit home to know that, wow, you know, this can happen anywhere. And I just, I just have to put a plug in my health class, because this is the second time this year. Last June, Jordan Voss was in a boating accident, and Lucas Miles pulled him out of the water and started CPR. And his stepmom, Jordan's stepmom Wendy Voss texted me and said, you know, I just want to thank you for saving Jordan's life, because she asked Lucas Miles, how did you know how to do CPR? And he said, I learned it in Mrs. Engelby's health class. So, you know, I've been teaching for 27 years, and this is the first time, you know, and I think it's awesome for two times in just one year that I've had kids, and Lucas Miles has been probably out of, you know, school for about four or five years. And to have him remember those things, I'm just so proud of my kids that, you know, they would take the initiative and go and help people and save them. So, and I love teaching that unit. It's just one of the highlights of the class. So, thank you, Dan.
Thanks, Chris. Okay. Financial business.
Julie? Yes. In your packets, you receive the financial reports for this meeting. You have the March 2017 Treasurers Report. I don't have anything to report on there, but there's all our balances, all our funds, and the balances that are included in those. On the flip side, on the bottom of the page is the Transfers and Wires for March 24 to April 5, 2017. And then at the top of the sheet, you can see each of the general funds, the adopted budget, what our monthly expenditures were, and what we've been so far with our year-to-date expenditures. And then you can see on the last column there, the percent of budget spent. And you can see it was coming up to the end of the fiscal year. We are getting pretty close to getting most of those budgets spent out. And then you should have two registers in your packet. The first one is the P Card. I'll go over, there's a couple things on there. And there is, the P Card, there's just invoices or, with those, there is no check number or anything. The TurboTax Intuit, that's a TurboTax 2016 software, and that'll be used in the business classes for education. And there's another one, Kalahari Resorts and Conventions. That was a IT technology conference that Lee Stewart and Will McAdams attended. Couple of weeks ago, that was, and that was held, the Wisconsin Dells. And the comment that was made from them is that it's just wonderful and to have all the other IT people together to share their ideas and how well, how things work, and what works for them, and what works, you know, just get some ideas how things can be done well. So, then we'll go to the check register. The first one I have is 59-630. That is to Andrew Paulson. He is accompanist for the solo ensemble concert that was held. And he performed for the rehearsals for all the solo ensembles, as each, each one that needed one, he was the one who accompanied them. And then he also played then for the concert for that. Then below that, 59-631, Apple Incorporated. This is for iPad Air Wi-Fi. They're 128 gigabyte iPads. There was 120 that were purchased, and that was part of our technology plan. And these iPads then will be placed in the kindergarten through fourth grade, so that all classrooms then will have 15 iPads available to them. And then last one is check number 59-675, Stoneware Incorporated. That's for the high school and elementary school Chromebooks. And this is a site license for those buildings, and that's also part of the technology plan for next year. So, do you have any questions or anything on those items?
Just a quick comment about the technology. What's really nice about the way that the district is doing this, we've done this for the last couple of years, where any new technology that we're going to use in September, we try to get that ordered in March, so that we receive it in April. And then it gives our tech team, Eric Walker, who will be asking the board to reinstate him this summer to help out, and working with our two technology people, you know, Will and Lee, going to those conferences very helpful with them, because they were dealing with the Lee and Wills of other districts. They weren't dealing with teachers, they were dealing with the real tech people. And they came back really enlightened. But over the summer, Lee and Will are going to be very busy. They're going to be installing a new Wi-Fi system at both buildings. We have a pretty good-sized pipeline of internet services that come into our building. But many of the teachers, when they all get online, and now next year of the high school, all of the classrooms, all the core classrooms will have their own set of Chromebooks. And as you see, more elementary classrooms are going to have at least 15. And the fifth and sixth grade classrooms all will have a classroom set of Chromebooks. So when you think about, there's going to be probably 1,200 student devices that will be hitting the Wi-Fi in addition to the 123 faculty. So.
And it could be at almost any time. You know, I mean.
That's correct. And so, having the Wi-Fi upgraded at both buildings this summer, and that's what Lee and Will are going to do, but between now and then, the new iPads that are physically here already in the new Chromebooks are in the process of getting processed, getting tagged, asset tags in the software loaded, so that they're all be ready to use by the first day of school. So it's a really good, efficient way. And we appreciate the fact that our fund balance is healthy enough that we can actually purchase this product in this year, so it can be used in the next school year. So we're in good shape. I want to thank the board for that.
Any other comments or questions on the bills or the checks? If not, then I would make a motion to approve the March 2017 Treasurers Report, wire transfers for March 24, 2017, to April 5, 2017, and payment of the April 11, 2017 bills.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion in a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. We have no old business, moving on to new business. We have health insurance bids. Danielle?
Yes. The district sent out requests for proposals for health insurance plan that will begin on July 1 of 2017. The district's current insurance coverage is through South Central Service Cooperative, which is a self-funded
Consortium?
Consortium, yeah. Sorry. Of school districts. And the RFP was advertised and was also sent directly to several insurance carriers with the request to match the benefits of our district's current health plans. Bids were opened on March 8, and then everyone has a copy of the bid tabulation at Appendix A in your packet. Administration Operations Committee is recommending that the board accept the bid from South Central Service Cooperative again. Their bid provides for a rate increase of 15.3% for 2017-18.
And I wanted to comment on this. Sue wanted me to make this point. You know, there's been a lot of discussion the last few years about health insurance costs going up. And the interesting thing about our district is that if you go back four years, that when you see a 15.3% increase, that sounds really large. However, when you factor that into the last four years, it averages out to be 2.4%. And the reason for that is, in the 14-15 fiscal year, we had a .3% increase. In the 15-16 school year, we had an 18.6% reduction. And then the following year, it went back up 9%, but that was still a 9.6% reduction from the previous year. And we're, you know, in all honesty, we're very fortunate. I mean, health insurance rates are really based on, number one, competition, but also based on the health of your employees. And we're very fortunate that we have a very healthy faculty and support staff at Fairmont Area Schools. But on average, over the last four years, we've seen a 2.4% increase. And I will tell you, as I work with other superintendents in the region, that's very enviable. They just go, wow, you must have a really, really healthy staff. Because, and we do. It's also, but we must have good doctors and nurses at Mayo, too, don't you think? I would think that's part of the reason why we're so healthy here. I'm just suggesting that might be a possibility. At least two out of six of you are.
Okay.
Okay. So I make a motion to approve accepting the bid from South Central Service Cooperative for district health and hospitalization insurance for the 2017-18 and 2018-19 school years.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. And now we have use of masonry funds. Dan will present.
This is in Appendix B in your packet. That show, well, we have, actually, that's the roof, never mind. We talked about all this at the Operations Committee meeting, so it's all bunched together in my mind. The masonry funds refer to the repairs that were made at the junior, senior high school building. We had set aside a certain amount of money. The project took less than what we had believed it would cost. So, we have yet $107,727 in these committed funds for the masonry updates. We have long-term facilities maintenance funds available now, thanks to action in the legislature last year, for which we have a long-term plan that we can spend on. So, we are asking the board right now to reassign the use of the committed fund dollars in planning for the 17-18 school year. The Operations Committee felt the funds would be best used for, number one, additional security cameras and upgrades at the high school. And number two, to pay for the assessments for the Cardinal Street Reconstruction Project that'll be happening this year. So all that school property that borders Cardinal Street, this is on the south side of the high school, and it runs roughly from the varsity baseball field up to Highway 15. The cost to the school district for that, the assessments from the city, is $64,860. And with a couple, a little bit left over, a couple of things to replace at the automotive and welding departments at the high school. One of those is a two-post auto hoist for the mechanic shop, and the other is a metal bandsaw, which is very old and in need of replacement. It would cost about $3,500 to replace. So all of those items I just mentioned would expend the full balance for the committed funds in that masonry project account that we have, that set aside that we had. These would be kind of permanent fixes for one-time costs. So the Operations Committee recommends approval that the board use this $107,727 in committed masonry funds for these alternate projects during the 17-18 school year. And I would make a motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, and we have a motion in a second? Any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. And roofing bids.
Yep. If you look at Appendix B, you'll see that we received three bids to continue the restoration of our roof. We're doing this in stages. And it's recommended that we accept the bid from WTI there, who we have had previously, and the results have been good. There is one area of the roof which may need more work than was originally expected, and that's above the commons and the PAC. There's been water detected with their machines that they use to see, and so they might have to go a little lower in the process of resurfacing that. But otherwise, the bid information is available in Appendix B for you to look at. And with that, I recommend that we approve accepting the bid from WTI for completion of the 2017 partial restoration roofing project at the high school for a total package cost of $208,567.75.
Do we have a second? Okay, motion in a second? Any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. And one more item of new business, Lawn Care Services Agreement. Danielle?
Yeah. Tyler Garrison is recommending that the district enter into another five-year agreement with Lawn Solutions for the lawn weed spraying and fertilizing services at Fairmont Elementary and Fairmont High School, the varsity baseball, softball, and football fields. This agreement would be an extension of the last five-years agreement. There would be no increase in costs with the exception of one additional service, which is weed control each year for an additional 18 acres. And then you have a copy of the agreement enclosed in Appendix C. The Operations Committee is recommending this for approval. So I make a motion to approve the five-year agreement with Lawn Solutions, extending the five-year agreement. Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second? Any questions?
One thing I liked about this bid is it's not something we usually see. But as we progress through our contract, we're given a discount. So it's actually cheaper in five years than it is this year. So, anyway. Just a note.
Well, the rationale for that was that the company, you know, once they know our land and know exactly what to put on it, and as they get another five-year commitment to maintain it, they take a lot of pride in their work. And they know that a lot of people, when they come on our campus to a football game, or a track meet, or a tennis match, that's one of the first things they see. And they take great pride in that, as long as they're consistently doing it, then, you know, and they're a local company, and so, I think it's.
They get, and they get the benefit from each year, you know, what chemicals or what, you know, what they've used. As long as they maintain it, they get that benefit each year as well. So, the fertilizer and.
And it's, and we've been told, too, that it's good public relations for them, because they can use this as a reference site, which we're very happy.
Perfect.
Very good. So. So, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Personnel, we have resignations.
Yes. Yes, we do have some resignations. The first one is Devon Arbuckle. She's a kindergarten teacher with us. She has tendered her resignation effective at the end of the 2016-17 school year. Devon and her husband will be relocating to Virginia for her husband's job. And she has worked within our district since 2013. So I would make a motion to approve the resignation of Devon Arbuckle, kindergarten teacher effective June 8, 2017.
Second.
We have a motion in a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes.
And then the next one is Erin Anderson. She's a third-grade teacher within our district. She's tendered her resignation effective at the end of the 16-17 school year. Erin and her husband are relocating for her husband's job. And she has also been with the district since 2013. So I would make a motion to approve the resignation of Erin Anderson, a third-grade teacher, effective June 8, 2017.
Second.
We have a motion in a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. One more?
And then the last one that I have here is Ashley Oliver has resigned from her position as an intervention aide to go back to school full-time. This was Ashley's first year of unemployment with the district. And so I would make a motion to approve the resignation of Ashley Oliver, intervention aide, effective June 8, 2017.
Second.
We have a motion in a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. And now we have employment. Del?
Jim Davison is recommending that Ross Long be hired to teach fifth grade, effective with the 17-18 school year. Ross will be placing, be replacing Brooke Schultz, who will be taking Cheryl Kidd's English position at the high school upon Cheryl's retirement. Ross holds a degree in police science and will graduate in May with a BA degree in education from Western Governors University in Salt Lake City, Utah. Ross is currently finishing up his student teaching at Lake Crystal Welcome Memorial Elementary School. In light of that information, I would move that we employ Ross Long as an elementary education teacher for the 2017-2018 school year, effective June 30, 2017, at a salary of BA Step 1.
I'll second it.
We have a motion in a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Summer technology position. Summer technology position. Julie?
Yes. Superintendent Brown referred to this already, but last summer, the board had approved employing a summer technology intern to assist our technology specialists with preparations for the start of the school year. Eric Walker was hired at that time for that position and did a great job working with Will and Lee, and so he's being recommended that he be hired again for this, this summer for the same position, beginning early June, extending through the end of August. His hourly rate will remain at twelve dollars an hour, and that, like we've talked about some of the technology as well here, he'll help get those things all in place and get our classrooms ready to go for the fall. So, I would make a motion to approve employing Eric Walker as a summer technology intern beginning early June through the end of August at a salary of twelve dollars an hour.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Medical leave requests.
We do have a medical leave request for Michelle Clifford that would begin in March twenty-eighth of two thousand seventeen and continue through April seventeenth, per medical recommendation, so I would move to approve that medical leave request.
I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Now we have Board Committee reports. Board, high school breakfast, Nicole?
Yep, we met with high school students for our monthly breakfast on the fourth of April, and we had a table full of students who approached us and would like to be involved more in decision-making and input in the schools, and asked if they might be able to form a group to facilitate that, and they were advised that they, they probably could. They needed to talk with Ms. Niss to do that, and that they would need an advisor, and that would be Superintendent Brown, who volunteered to do that. And then they just need to form that group, and I believe it's already in the works, and they are very excited about it. We also encourage them to, that all of our meetings are open to the public. There are, all of our committee meetings are open to the public, our school board meetings are open to the public, and that students, as well as adults, are welcome to attend. Anyone is welcome to attend, and we encourage the public to attend and give their input. So, it was a good meeting.
Yeah, it was a very good meeting. It was only the second breakfast with the board, with the students that we've had. We'll be doing this monthly, and in that short time, the level of interest has grown. Students are, I think, realizing that, you know, that we are interested in hearing from them, hearing their thoughts, their ideas, and I hope, hopefully this will develop into something, you know, even bigger, so that we can, you know, hear directly from the students about, you know, how, what kind of job that we're doing in the, as far as their education. And then leading in, you know, leading, this leads to the next topic, which is the, some of the board members have met with the career and technology teaching staff. And it was, that meeting arose because the staff had questions about discussions that have been taking place within the high school regarding a new schedule for next year. And the whole, the whole impetus, the thrust for this, in these discussions, is trying to figure out how to create a learning environment that will better prepare kids for college and careers, give them more responsibility, more independence, create more interesting and challenging learning environments within the, within the school. And, and they are, you know, the, this group of teachers was very excited about the possibilities. They gave us, they gave us their thoughts, and very importantly, it, you know, just as the students have come forward to, to share their ideas with the board, this was a, I think, a critically, critical first step in trying to establish a dialogue with teachers, because we, we very much want to hear from the teachers. We want to directly dialogue with the teachers to find out, you know, what their thoughts are, so that we can work together to, you know, build a stronger school district. And so, it was a very good meeting. Who else was there? Dell and...
Me.
Julie?
I wasn't there.
Yeah.
There were just three?
I thought there was gonna be four.
There were four, no?
No, there were just three.
There were four of the teachers. It was the four core teachers that are on the first floor of the south wing, so agriculture, family and consumer science, automotive welding, and construction trades. And one thing, one request that came from that is that the, the committee of the board that met with the vocational group is requesting that sometime throughout the year, they'd meet with each of the departments, that anybody from any of the departments would like to sit down and have a caucus with the members of the board. But that, that was a really neat meeting, though. It lasted a couple of hours, and we just talked about a lot of different topics, and I think tomorrow morning, Mrs. Niss and Andy Trader are having a faculty meeting in the morning that's set at seven thirty. I'm looking at a couple of our high school teachers that are in the audience, and they're going to be, Mrs. Niss is going to be presenting a written document to all the faculty to look at. That document has been reviewed and tweaked a little bit in the last forty-eight hours. We just want to make sure, what's really neat about what's happening right now is that there's just a lot of discussion and a lot of interest from, I think, all of us to ask ourselves a basic question, is there a different way to help our students become lifelong learners? That's really the question, and so, it's gonna be kind of fun to see.
Yeah, and this, this, one of the, or a few other questions or ideas that this, this will address is, we've been, we've realized very recently that, you know, that we need more tutoring opportunities within the, the school, within the school day, peer-to-peer tutoring. And, you know, what we're trying to do is create some flexibility within the school day for students that, you know, that, you know, that have the, the interest for gate, for, for seeking help from other students, or for assisting other students, that they have the structure in place that that can take place within the school day. And also, you know, one of the big challenges for any teacher is trying to, trying to keep the whole class engaged, you know, students, there's some students that, you know, that need a little bit more instruction, there's some that, that get it very quickly, and, and they may become, they become daydreamers, you know, as the, you know, as the lecture proceeds. And so, if, you know, if the teacher feels that there are students that, that could benefit from some independent, you know, learning or, or peer tutoring, it creates a, you know, the possibility for some flexible learning. So, there's a lot of great opportunities that, that could develop from this. The teachers that, that, that did a site visit to the Chan Hassen School District that has implemented this type of program came back very, very excited about it. And so, we're, we're hoping to, you know, to, you know, explore all the possibilities within the next few years.
So, moving on to Operations Committee meeting.
Operations Committee meeting met, took place last Tuesday. We reviewed the health insurance bids that we approved as a board tonight. We discussed the one hundred, seven thousand dollars left in the masonry funds and decommitting that to take care of the projects that we mentioned and improved. We looked at the roof project bids for the summer. There were three bids, they were very close, very competitive. We did approve the low bid here tonight. One thing that didn't have board action tonight that we talked about is there are two Lincoln welders which were not operative at the high school shop, and they've been repaired, so now we're discussing what to do with those, if we should sell them, if we should keep them, or dispose of them in some other way. We looked at the extra equipment needed for the flexible school year and adding security cameras to a couple of places in the high school building that don't have them right now. And we talked about the lawn spraying and fertilizer proposal from Lawn Solutions that we approved here tonight.
Okay, very good. Strategic planning listening session. Julie?
Yes, on Thursday, April sixth, our district was involved in the strategic planning listening sessions. There were sessions held at the high school with different level, grade levels of students. There was also staff that met after school. They also met, there was four of us board members that met together and gave our ideas and that, and then in the evening, then the community members came in and also went through the process. And some of the things that we talked about, we were given a form to fill out, and this, I'm sure was through, most of, each group had that, but one list was things that were going well, things that are working good, things that, you know, what we can do better, things that are our strengths, but then again, also, what are our opportunities for improvement, areas that could be changed, things that are of concern. And then the bottom part of it, or the, the final part about the, the day was a vision where we saw where we would be going. Where do you see that Fairmont area schools would be in, in three to five years, and kind of just projecting kind of our thoughts of what we wanted to do. And so, this was presented to different student groups, teachers, like I said, the board members, and then also community members, and this was just the first part of our gathering information. And we will meet again then on April twentieth for our next. You know, now they've, now the, the two that are doing this, I can't think, Jeff...
Olson.
Jeff Olson and...
Harold Remy.
Harold Remy. You know, and I thought that's who it was, but I'm just like, oh, I'm not sure on my memory, but, but they, they took all the information back, and they will, you know, go through it all and kind of see where the common grounds are, where there are some things that are gonna come from that, and then they'll present or come back to our district, and that'll be April twentieth. And that would be at six PM that the first session would be, so. And where do we meet that night?
I believe this is the Bud Room, isn't it, Julie?
The Bud Room?
Bud Room at the Fairmont Elementary.
Thank you. I was gonna ask you earlier, and I forgot, so I'm glad I asked now.
I had a work commitment that night, and I wasn't able to attend. How was the crowd, as far as the number of people from the community that were there?
You know, Dan, the crowd wasn't real large, but they were vibrant. They were, they, we had, we had, you know, we spent, actually, we spent a lot of time talking about, there were a couple folks that were concerned that we were going to get a school resource officer. And so, we spent some time, and I actually went and got a copy of the SRO contract that we approved, and I noticed last night the city council approved, and I went and I gave that to these people. One was a public defender, and one was a judge from Jackson, and they are residents of our community, and it was a very nice discussion, and after everybody else left, they actually stayed back for another half hour. Mrs. Niss and I talked to them a little bit about, you know, why we felt that a school resource officer was a good investment of time and resources for our community, for our entire community. But the discussions are very good, and, you know, the students that met with the consultants, I actually sat and listened to them, and they were very interesting, and when the board met with the consultants, and some of the faculty members met, and the administrative team, all the principals and myself, we met with them also. And it, and then, in addition to that, if you can recall, there's the opportunity to either do a paper survey or to go online and do a survey, and they said that the results, the number of people that have responded to that survey is very, very high compared to other school districts. Remember, Mr. Olson and Mr. Remy have done this all throughout the state in the last two years, and they said that the community interest in, in their perception of our schools is very, very high. You know, their interest of expressing their opinion, I just think that's a great sign. You know, for all the dissension that's going on right now in politics at the state and local level, it's just great to see our community be able to discuss things in a reasonable, rational way for the betterment of our future. I just, I'm very proud of our community.
The, the survey, has that closed yet?
I don't believe it has. I think it's still open until Easter time.
And that was...
Is the survey still open, do you think, Judy? Is that still on the website? It may or may not be.
Okay, but in terms of, you know...
It ended April sixth.
April sixth, it was the deadline? Okay, so it has closed, okay.
So, the next steps for this process, and I think, you know, as, as the process unfolds, I think more people may decide to participate, and so, and I think, you know, as more people realize the importance of this project for, for students, for teachers, for, for parents, and for the community at large, you know, you know, we may come out of this with some very important decisions regarding, you know, the, the future of the district, and so, it's important to hear from all stakeholders.
It is, and it's not too late. In fact, we had somebody stop in the district office today to volunteer to be on that committee. I think we're up to twenty-two, twenty-three? Twenty-two people have volunteered to be on that committee, and, and, you know, they said a good group would be around thirty, and so, we still have room. And you don't have to have children in the district. I mean, if you have grandchildren in the district, or have never had children in the district, or you're a business owner, or a manufacturer, it's only, you know, the next time we meet is April twentieth, but I think we only meet three more times, and it's scheduled from six to eight thirty. So, we're talking about a total of, what, seven and a half hours of your life over the next month and a half. But you're right, it's a great time to get your voice out and, and be part of the process.
So, if someone still wants to participate, they would just need to contact Judy?
Yes.
The district office?
Mm-hmm.
Very good.
Yep.
SDCC meeting.
SDCC met last night at three forty-five. The majority of the meeting was spent discussing the end-of-the-year Q comp process and making sure that all parties are aware or will be aware of the forms and the meetings that they have and the conferences that they have. It's, it's quite a process, but it does yield some very good results. Also, Kim Principal Niss from the high school noted that there will be ten teachers from the high school who will be going to Chan Hassen for a conference or workshop where they will be instructed on, and, and the focus will be blended learning and personalized learning, and that will be sometime this spring. And it was a fairly quick meeting, and like I said, the majority of it was spent discussing PLCs, I'm sorry, Q comp.
Okay, very good. That is the end of the agenda. I'll...
I had, I had one question I wanted to ask Joe real quick. With the two resignations of the elementary school teachers that we had tonight and the one hiring, we are currently at, what, four positions we need to fill? Three or four? Teaching positions for next year between the retirements and the resignations?
Right now, we have, we actually have two, we have two fifth-grade positions that will be new, and teachers have already interviewed for those positions, and there is a recommendation, and the two people have accepted those offers, and we'll be taking them to the next Staff Welfare Committee to proceed them through the process, to get them to the board. We'll vote on them with the next school board. And then, we have a kindergarten opening that somebody interviewed for last evening, and there's a couple more interviews that will be held Wednesday afternoon, Wednesday evening, and we'll see if any of those three people will be recommended. We have some, we have some other transitions that are happening at the high school that will be, we've been verbally notified that we know for sure that at least one teacher will be leaving our district, but he'll turn in a letter of resignation once he gets his signed contract from the other district. And so, there's, there's a lot of movement. You know, Cabinet, we meet every week, and about a month ago, the principals and I were talking about, isn't this great? Looks like we're only gonna have three new faculty next year, and when the dust settles, it looks like we may have close to ten. So, the, once again, though, the, the applications that are coming in, I think they're a little stronger than they've been in the past.
That's, that's the main reason I asked the question, 'cause I know we'd had concern about that the last couple of years, but we are getting candidates.
We are. In fact, it's, it's surprising, I think, and they're coming directly to Judy, and, and she pops out about every half hour and says, we've got another one. And so, I think there's a lot of interest, a lot of positive, a lot of people that would like to work in Fairmont, and so, that's a good sign. But right now, the only position that's officially open that we're still looking for is the kindergarten position that we accepted the resignation of, of Mrs. Arbuckle.
Great, thanks.
Yeah.
Any other questions? Any other business?
I'd make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Maybe a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Five fifty, Cole? Five sixty, five fifty, right?
Okay.
All right. Thank you, board. Another job well done. Are you serving the, the... Are you serving the, the...